This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, without further ado, I will open up the Zoom meeting of the Southampton Planning Board for June 1st, 2022. And all members are present except for Dan, Lavalley, and Paul Fagall. Aren't available tonight, but we do have a quorum. And I'd like to introduce Richard Harris, our board consultant that's here with us tonight, and also Deb Tuzinski is from the E-code company that the town is contracted with, and she's going to give us a presentation about that's all about and fill us in. So, Deb, it's all yours.
Take it away. Okay. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, thank you very much again. My name is Deb Tuzinski. I am the project editor with General Code. We've been hired by the town to do a codification of the town bylaws, the general bylaws and the zoning bylaw. So I'm here to show you basically where we are with that project right now. I'm going to share my screen, so just bear with me here a second. Okay, tell me, you should be seeing a screen now that says Town of Southampton, Mass. across the top in kind of a violet thing. Okay? This is what we call your code review site. This is basically an online view of your code. This is a private site. In order to access it, people have to be invited and set up a password. Eventually, at the end of the project, when this is done and approved by the town, this will become a public-facing site. And this will be a way for members of the public to access the town bylaws and the zoning bylaw and any other rules and regulations that town chooses to add to the codification. There will also be hard copy outputs of the code, but we find nowadays that most people access this material through the online portal. So the first thing I want to just show you here, I'm on the homepage right now. Up here, there's this black admin button. This will show you who has been invited to join the site and to view it. So we have Paul here. Basically, where you see the light emails that people who have already configured their password, here's me. Here's the town clerk. There's members of the general bylaws committee have already logged on and started using this. So if any of you, Sarah, Richard, I think you've already configured your password. Cindy, if we need to add you, we can go ahead and do that. You can add as many people as you want. But so basically, in order for them to access the site, they need, they'll get an email invitation, invited to set up their password, and once they do that, they can come in here and they can look at the code. And right now, that's all anybody can do. No one can come in here and start making changes to your bylaws. This is entirely sort of read-only. So you can email me and I can add people for you. Or basically, it's very simple. If you need to add someone, you just put in their email address. And then there's a, it's covered up for me right now because of the Zoom windows, but there's a little checkbox on the right, and you click that, and they will get an email inviting them to join the site and set up a password. Any questions about that? Okay. Please feel to jump in, raise your hand, or just unmute and ask a question as we go through. That's fine.
I have a question, Cindy. So we have view-only access once we give you the email, which is fine. However, at some point, these bylaws become available to the entire town? And what is that? How does that work?
I'll show you.
After they're voted to, or am I just jumping?
That's okay. No, you're fine. It's a good question. I'm going to go back to the homepage and scroll down a little bit, and this will hopefully make a little bit more sense. And just bear with me here. I'm having some sizing issues because I've got the Zoom window on the corner here, and it's kind of messing me up. Okay. So back to the homepage, I'm just going to scroll down a little bit here. And this is basically a view of what the codification looks like. So we have the general bylaws are first, and they're organized into two parts, administrative and regulatory. The chapters are in alphabetical order, so this is the organization we've created for the general bylaws. Part two is zoning, which is what we'll focus on right now. So I'm just going to click on this, and this is going to open up where we are with the zoning bylaw right now. So all we've done to this point is, it's been assigned a chapter number. When we create this code, everything, each bylaw that goes in is assigned a chapter number. And then all of the sections are renumbered to include that number. This provides a unique identifier for each section in the code, which will then allow it to be cited and allow us to create an index for the code. Right? And then, as we went through it, if there were cross-references to the old numbering, those have been updated to the new numbering. Right now, that's the only changes that have been made to the bylaws. There have been no changes to the text. It's in the same order. It has the same text as your current bylaw that you're using. It's really, at this point, all we've done is put some structure and some numbering around it for the new code. What happens at the end of the project, and I'm just going to go back to the home button for a second. Once this project is done and the codified version is approved, and anything we do to the bylaws, of course, whether it's just the renumbering or any changes to the text, has to go to town meeting to be approved. And I'll talk a little bit about what that process looks like as we get a little further along. Once that happens, the code, this site will come down and a new public-facing online code will be made available. And that's something that people can access basically from your website or just by Googling it. And actually, let me just give you, just show you what that looks like. So I'm switching over. This is our live E-code site. This is no, I've gone away from your private site. This is now our live site. So I'm clicking on Massachusetts. So we have 125 completed codes in Massachusetts. Remind me what county you guys are in?
Hampshire.
Hampshire. Let's see who we've got. Hampshire. So here's Northampton, Hadley, South Hadley. So Hadley, for example, has completed their code, so I'm going to click on it. This is their completed public-facing E-code. So you can go online and Google Town of Hadley. You'll probably, this will be one of the hits. You can go onto their website, and I'm sure they have a link to this code from their website. So this is kind of what we're driving at with this project, is to create this code that then becomes available for members of the public to use. So if you're a resident of Hadley or you're doing research to see, you know, what do they do to regulate chickens or something like that? You can access their code. You can open up, this is their general bylaw on animals and licensing, and you can look and see, you know, how they regulate it. So basically, what we're doing for Southampton is creating what we created for Hadley. Does that answer your question, Cindy, about kind of where this is going?
Yes, it does. I asked too soon.
That's quite all right. That's quite all right. It's good. Make sure I don't miss anything. So that's very good. So as I said, we've basically, at this point, just put together the structure. And then, oh, let me just show you one other thing before I jump into the questions. Let me come over here. Sorry, I'm doing this on my home computer, and I'm used to my work computer, and my work computer screen is a bit bigger, so I'm just having some sizing issues, so bear with me. So over here on the left-hand side, under miscellaneous documents, are some materials related to this project. This is basically a holding page where we put everything related to the project, so you can come look at it if you're interested. There's a copy of the contract. There's an overview of the steps of the project. There was a first report that I submitted that was mostly about the general bylaws and coming up with the organization for them that's posted here. There is a PDF version of the entire code, which I'll just click on and open if you're, or someone, you know, on the board is more comfortable working with PDFs. The entire code, the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws, 238 pages. For you guys, for your convenience, I put in a separate PDF of just the zoning bylaw. So that's 90 pages. This gives you a better idea than the online version of what the print output looks like. So again, it's the text that you have right now, just a little bit different numbering. I believe the article numbers are the same or close to it. And then we just added the standardized section numbers, and then everything starts with 275 because that's the assigned chapter number for zoning in the new code. So if you want to, you can come, again, it's under missed documents on the left. You can click this open. You can download it if you'd rather work off of a PDF than in the online version. And then there's also posted here a PDF copy of your use regulations table. This is set up as an attachment rather than embedded in the text, so we could make it a little bit bigger and a little bit easier to read. Another way you can access that, before I move away from this, any questions about this page that we're looking at? Again, this is mostly just PDF versions of the online code. I don't want, I have a tendency to talk too fast, so please stop me if you have questions.
You're fine. That's good.
Okay. All right. All right. I'm going to go click. Anytime you're anywhere in this site, if you just click on the little home button, that'll take you right back to the homepage. Okay. So I'm going to scroll back down to zoning and open that again. I just wanted to show you that any attachments in here, we just have the one, the use table is also linked here. So instead of having to go find it in the text, it's right here. You can just click it and open it from here. Okay? So basically, what we did, after we put this manuscript, we call it the manuscript together, I read through all of the bylaws, the general bylaws and the zoning. And the purpose of that review is, we create a report called the editorial legal analysis, just a series of questions. You can see over here on the left, there's a total of 183 questions for the entire document. And what we do, what I do during that read is, we're looking for conflicts and inconsistencies where two sections may be either within the zoning bylaw or between the zoning bylaw and the general bylaws have conflicting requirements or inconsistencies. We look for, we track all of the titles that are used because sometimes those change over time. Maybe you used to have a dog officer, but now it's an animal control officer. Maybe you used to have a building inspector, and now it's called the building official. Department titles change, things of that nature. We point out every fee that is mentioned, so you have a chance to check and make sure that that fee is up to date. Same thing with penalties. We do a check of the text of what it says right now against current state law because that's another thing that changes over time. You might have a situation where you have a provision that was correct when it was passed, but then the state law changed. And now there's an inconsistency between what your local bylaw says and what the state law requires. So we'll point that type of thing out. So the phase that we're in now in the project is, what we've submitted here for the town to review is the manuscript, as you see it, and also the questions. And there's two ways you can get to the questions. I'll go in a minute over here. You can click on all questions, and that will give you all the questions for the entire document, the general bylaws through zoning. And then if you just come to zoning, if you just want to work through here, you'll see this little question icon on the right. And where you see that, that's a section where I have one or more questions. So there's no questions in Article 1. And then when we start getting into definitions, there are going to start to be questions. So they follow along with the text of the chapter, so you can go along and you'll see them. So here we have, it's, the questions collapsed. So you have a definition of cluster development, and you can see I have a question about that definition. The questions are numbered. All of the questions on zoning, because it's Chapter 275, start with 275 and have a number. So this tells you, this is the third question in this chapter. To see the question, you just click on this and open it. And what this will give you is, it will start with basically a snippet of the code. And these are links, anywhere you see where I'm pointing, where there's, it comes up as a line underneath it, that's a link. You can jump to it, or you can scroll up and see it as well. There is a piece of the code here that I have highlighted. This is just to bring attention to the question I'm asking. And then underneath that is my question. And I try as much as possible to give you as much information as possible to understand what I'm asking. In this case, if you want to just take, as an example, look at this question a little bit more closely, I'm pointing out that you've got a definition of cluster development. In 2020, the zoning act was amended to change that term to open space residential development. Here's a snippet from the statute of how that wording reads now. And so my question is, basically, do you want to update this term from cluster development to open space residential development? And that, so that's the question. And then underneath the question, you'll have options. So you can say, yes, Deb, you're right, and change cluster development. You can ask me to do something else. You can say, well, that's interesting, but we're going to stick with cluster development for now, so don't change it. And you can say, well, that's interesting, but we're not ready to really commit to that decision, so we don't want to do anything right now, but we might revisit this in the future, so we'll just defer this. And this defer option is pretty much all of the questions. It's entirely up to you how much or whether you make revisions, actual text revisions to the zoning bylaw as part of this project. The extent that you review and what changes you want to make is entirely up to you. So the idea here basically is, we've submitted the questions. It's now up to the town to go through and look at the questions and provide us with a decision one way or the other. Change it, don't change it, defer. Is everyone with me so far? I'm throwing a lot of information at you. Any questions? Okay. I can't see all, so I'm just going to take that as moving on. Some other bells and whistles that we've built into each question, you might use these, you might not. There's a show discussion box, so if different people are working on it and you want to kind of swap notes, it's kind of like a version of sticky notes back to people or comments. If you were using a Word document, you can click here and put notes in here, and other people can look at them. If you want to assign it to a particular person, anyone who's in here as a user of the site can be assigned a question. So if you say, you know what, this is something we really need Richard to look at, you can assign it to him. If you make a decision, but you think, yeah, I need someone to look at that, you can click needs review. If there's something you want me to see, you can certainly just email me or call me. Please feel free to do that as you work through this. Or you can just click this and add a note for me. That it'll just pop up a box, and you can put this in. I won't get this until you send the questions back. So if you have something that you need an answer for more quickly, please just email me or give me a call. But this box is here if you wanted to add something for me to look at. And how these also work to the assignments and the needs review is, at the very top of the, I'm going to go back to the homepage at the beginning here again. You can. Oops, I'm not seeing it. Sorry. You can't, oh, I think I may have to actually quick-click something. Bear with me here. Let's say, just for fun, I'm going to answer this question. Oh, it's already been answered. Good for the general bylaws committee. They've been doing some work. Okay, I'm sorry. The thing I was going to show you is not coming up, so I'll have to check on why that's happening. There is usually a way to filter the remaining questions. Oh, I'm sorry. That's what I have to do. I have to click on all questions. Sorry, it's late. If you click on all questions, this is another way to see the questions. Instead of going chapter by chapter, if you click on all questions over here on the left, this will just give you all the questions in a row for the whole thing. And then up here, you have these handy things that you can sort by. So if you've assigned a bunch of questions to Richard, instead of having to go individually find them, he can just click on here and pick his name, and it will filter and show him just the questions that have been assigned to him. If you've marked questions that need review, again, you can click this and filter it, and it will just display those questions. You can also use, yes, go ahead.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
On the sticky notes thing, you said they could each go in there and they could make their notes and respond back to each other?
Yes.
How does that work with the open means law and public records where they're engaged in discussion outside of a meeting that the public doesn't have an opportunity to see?
I have not had that question before, and I honestly, I'm not sure about the answer to that. I will have to check on that and get back to you.
I just raised this question. And there's a more fundamental question. The planning board's been working for Craig and Paul about four years on codification zoning bylaw and making edits to it. And we didn't find out till like February this year that General Code had been hired last year.
Yes. Yes, I heard about that. I'm sorry about that.
So we've got substantial sections that we have rewritten.
Okay.
Could we submit those to you and have those submitted to? For instance, one of the changes made was we took all the definitions out of all the sections and put them into the definition article.
Okay.
So could we submit that to you and have that put in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So what I would recommend is, at this point, the next thing we should get back is the response to the questions. And if, as you go through the questions, you see a question that's basically moot now because you've already rewritten that section, you can just put a note to that effect, or just say, do not revise, and just kind of skip that question. And that's fine. If you have other revisions that you've made, like the ones you've already been working on, you just need to submit those to us. And with the next phase of the project, once we get the responses to the general bylaws, the zoning, we will take those responses, take any other revisions that you've prepared, and we'll incorporate everything and create the next draft of the code. Now let me ask this question. In terms of the changes that you've already been working on, was it your plan, how are you planning to adopt that? Were you going to submit like a series of amendments to town meeting? Or are you planning to do like a complete readoption of the whole zoning bylaw?
It would have been a readoption, hope.
Okay. Because we can do that, you know, we can, basically how this type of project works is, we submit the manuscript and the questions, the community goes through and reviews them, makes the decisions. They're sent back to us. We incorporate everything, put it into a draft, a preliminary draft. The town gets one more chance to kind of do a final review and sign off on it, and sometimes we have some final questions. Once everything is in final form, we submit a final draft and the necessary warrant articles for it to go to town meeting. And there's two ways that can go. It can be a simple, single article that repeals and replaces a complete recodification. Or we can take what we refer to as the two-artikel approach, where the first article accepts the renumbering, that's all it does. And then the second article makes whatever changes the community has authorized us to make, and it just kind of spells them out. So we can assist with that process. So absolutely, if you want to roll the changes that you've already made into this as part of this project, you can do that. If you're already on track to get them to town meeting and adopted in the near future, like, do you have, did you have a meeting in May, or do you have one coming up in this month?
Yeah, but we have, yeah, there's something coming up in June, but we're not prepared right now.
We basically stopped work in February when we found out that this was underway.
Okay. All right. So my expectation, just based on my experience with these projects and where we are now, there's an outside possibility that we could be ready with this for the fall. But I, what I would expect, and what I told the general bylaw committee is, we're probably looking at 2023 for submission of this to the town meeting and to get everything passed. That's typically, it does take usually a long time for the community to go through the questions and review the bylaws and make all their final decisions about what changes are going to be made.
Yeah, I don't see how we could be ready for fall either, Richard. Correct?
No, no, we couldn't. And I was planning director in South Hadley when you did the South Hadley.
Okay.
And. It didn't, that took probably much longer than the community expected. Because we had a lot of questions.
Yeah, like I said, we're used to other amendments kind of going on on a different track from this project. So if there are things that, you know, even out of that bunch where you say, you know what, this is really important, we really need to address stormwater or whatever it is, and you want to go ahead and get that done, you know, that's fine. You don't, I don't want you to feel like you have to wait for changes to be made to be part of this project, but we can roll them into this project and do it all at once.
The biggest problem is a lot of changes into relate to other portions of the bylaw. So it's really essential to try to maintain an integrated approach to it. And what I had been advising the board is, the first step would be to get the bylaw in the organized fashion that you want and have additions made, but not have substantial substantive controversial revisions as the first step. That needs to come in another, another step down the road.
Okay. Yeah. Well, so what I would, I generally recommend with this is, I think there's approximately 60 questions just on the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And you'll generally find, a lot of what we're pointing out is pretty basic housekeeping stuff. You know, this section of, this section, this reference to the statutes is outdated because the section got renumbered. Is this fee correct? There's missing wording in this section. Is this title correct? So what I generally recommend is, just take a first pass through the questions and see how many are kind of low-hanging fruit that are uncontroversial, very basic. There are things you might even have already identified in what you've already been working on as needing to be fixed. And sort of go through and see how many of those you can just answer, you know, no problem. And then kind of circle back and look at maybe the more detailed types of questions that need a little bit more research, a little bit more discussion, you know, something of that nature. And then work through those. Sure.
And Richard, you can chime in on this. Do you think then, with the work we've done on a lot of those sections, that if we submit that, some of those questions may have already been answered? And instead of going through it now, go through the version that we've already covered, and then the questions will come back to us after that?
That's, sorry, go ahead to somebody else. I would not, I would recommend, it would be preferable for us, I don't want to have to kind of resubmit another round of questions if we can avoid it. Like I said, if you can go through the questions and you see something, I would, I guess I would ask you, what I asked you to do is take a first pass through the questions. And if you're in a situation where you say, you know, a lot of these things that Deb is asking about, these are on sections that we've completely rewritten. I would ask you to really look at the questions though, because what I've run into with some other communities is, you know, they'll say, oh, we did something new, and here's this new thing. And then I look at it and realize that a lot of the questions I asked actually still apply because the particular thing I asked about was not something that got changed or got addressed. So I would, for starters, I would ask you to just take a look through the questions and kind of get a sense of what I'm asking versus what you've already worked on. And if you think we need to take another step at that point, if it's, if the way the questions are laid out or something like that is just not going to work for you, then contact me and we'll figure out maybe what the best course of action is.
No, that's fair.
I would agree with Deb. I think we need to look at the questions first. And maybe that when we do submit the revisions, she may have questions about the revisions that we have.
Yeah, I can certainly reconcile everything. So if you like, take a pass through the questions and answer them, and then you submit the other materials, I will know. If I come to a point where I say, okay, they answered this question, but I've got this rewrite of the section, I'll know the rewrite is what I should go with. Or if I'm not sure, then I will send a question back to you and say, okay, just clarify for me what you want us to do in this particular section. So I can, I can take everything and reconcile it, but it would be easy. I don't want to like, just get the new material, put it in, and then have to go back through and figure out which one of my questions at that point still applies and kind of resubmit questions. That would be a little difficult for us to do.
Think you said on one of the options in all the questions is revise as noted?
Yes, or you can, you can put that in as well. So actually, let's just look at a question again.
That's what I would suggest we probably would do, is you may say, this may have been addressed in our revision and see attached.
Right. So here's a question on your applicability section at the beginning of. And what I noticed here is that there seems to be wording missing. It's based on this section of the statutes. It's based on six of 40A. And what I did was basically take the text of the statute and compare it to your section. And where material is underlined, that's the wording that's missing from your section. So what I'm asking here is, is can I just revise this as I've indicated so it matches the statute? Do you want to do something different? You can put revise as follows here. You can defer.
That's a good example, because for the revisions we have, we wrote that section.
Okay. Okay. So then you could, what you could do then is just click here and say, see revisions. That's all you really need to do. And that will tell me that this particular section has already been addressed. And then what I will do then is go and look at your revision and make sure it actually addresses the question. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yes.
And just, I just want to circle back for a minute to the question that was asked before about the discussions. Like I said, I had not had that question before. I would suggest if. I would suggest if, if, if your normal practice is to have any discussions among the planning board members done as part of a meeting so that it's on the public record, then don't use this. Or only discuss it when you're in a convene meeting like you are right now. Like maybe identify questions that need review that you want to talk about, and then do it as part of the meeting. I will double check when I get back in the office tomorrow, if anyone else has had this question, if there's any other information I can give you on that. But first, certainly, whatever your normal procedure is for discussing the zoning bylaw and potential changes to the zoning bylaw in terms of meeting public record requirements, you absolutely want to follow that. So if using this discussion tool to sort of put notes back and forth is not consistent with that, then I would just not use it.
Can I chime in on this right now? Because I remember from doing the open meeting law training that the advice was, the, the requirement was that there is no discussion, like Richard is saying, outside of a public meeting. The only thing that can occur is, you know, the scheduling of a meeting or something like that. But in terms of actually, you know, kind of discussing any topic, that is supposed to occur always in a public meeting. And you might just look at public meeting law for the state of Massachusetts as well. And the, the other thing is a question I have, and you're giving us a lot of great information. Did I miss this? Do we do a public hearing prior to, once the revisions are made? Once everybody agrees that we like the way that's revised, we're prepared to have it voted on? I think, and Paul could correct me if I'm wrong, we've always done a public hearing preceding the actual town meeting.
Yes, you're required by statute before you make any, vote on any revisions to the zoning bylaw to have a public hearing. And that's, that same process would apply.
Okay, I, did you say that already?
I did not. So that's a very good question.
Okay, sorry. Thanks.
Okay. I'm just trying to think through if there's anything else regarding the questions that you had. Are there any other questions about the questions, which sounds kind of silly? But are there any other questions about the questions?
What's the, on the left hand side, under the questions incomplete, what is that just?
So, so as soon as a question is answered, and it looks like some of the questions in the general bylaws have been answered, it will reduce the number of questions that are, that still need to be answered. So this is a way to track how many questions are outstanding. So as soon, so, so for example, if you came in, if you had a meeting and you made decisions and you, you clicked this, I'm not going to do it because I don't want to like make it look like I've made the decision. This would drop to, the all questions would drop to 182, and, or excuse me, the incomplete would drop to 136. That would indicate that there are 136 questions left that need to be answered. It's just a way of tracking how many are left that need to be answered versus the total number of questions. And if you look at it, as I said before, you can come right to zoning, you can jump right to zoning and go through the questions through the text. Or you can click on all questions on the left and scroll, you'd have to scroll down, there's really no way. There might be, actually, there might be a way. So zoning is 275, and so the first question would be 001. No, that didn't work. Or do I have that number wrong? Nope, it's right. Okay, yeah. So it, it, well, it jumped you to question 275001. I'm not sure if there's a way to kind of jump down the list to the beginning of zoning without scrolling. I'll check on that. The other thing you might want to do, this first question is just an introduction, and it's, it covers a lot of the material I talked about today. So if the other board members who weren't able to be here kind of jump in and want some orientation, they can read through this. This sort of just talks about the manuscript on the site, going through the questions, how to respond to the questions, basically a lot of things that I've talked about in the session. If you are interested in samples, I can give you samples if you want to know what another community has done something on. This is a brief explanation of the code adoption process we've been talking about. You can do a readoption, you can just renumber and make updates. And then this is just an overview of the steps that I talked about where you're going to send the changes back to us. We're going to submit a couple, a series of a couple more drafts, and then it's going to go to town meeting for approval. And then there's just some general information about penalties. Your limit as a town in Massachusetts is $300 for a bylaw violation, some information about fees, and then how to basically wrap up the project.
When does the board need to have its comments on this first draft to you?
So the due date, I'm just going to click back on the home. Our due date right now is August 26th. So you have about three months, June, July, August. If you find that you need more time, we can push that a little bit. But we just want to be careful about that because we need to have time to go through the next couple of phases. Again, to make sure everything is done and in place and ready to go for your public hearings and to town meeting at your annual meeting next year in 23. So we can't, we don't really want to let it, you know, go too far past that, but we can provide an extension if needed. The other thing I wanted to show you a little bit is some of the functionality of the eCode platform within the chapter. And this will be true when this is done. But you can also start utilizing this now. So this is the text of the zoning bylaw. Everywhere you see a little square here next to it, you can select as a piece of the code. So let me just see if I can find a good sort of longish section. Let's see. So let's say, let's say you're looking at, you're working on the signs portion of the bylaw. And you say, you know what, let's take a look at what signs we're allowing in our districts. Or you maybe want to start drafting some potential changes to this. If you click that piece of it, this menu pops up up here, you can print it. And the really handy thing that people get a lot of use out is that you can download it. You can download it either to PDF or Word. If you needed to start drafting a change to this, you can put it into Word, download it, just that piece that you selected, open it up in a Word document, enable editing, put on track changes. And then you can start making revisions in here if you need to work on a draft of the new section. So any piece of the code you can select, or the whole chapter even, you can select and download or print. Basically, anywhere you see a box, if you see a box, you can do, you could do the whole signs article from here. If I just click download, I can put it in PDF. And that will open just the signs article for me in a PDF file that I could save or print or email or whatever I want to do with it. Okay?
So the attachment cannot be downloaded in Word, can it?
It actually can. It actually, oh, actually, I don't, actually, I'm not sure about that. But I can, if you want this in Word, I can send it to you in Word.
Okay, because that's one of the problems I encountered in South Hadley after it was done and made a change at town meeting, trying to incorporate that into the, submit it to the AG's office.
Ah. Yeah, if you need a copy of this in Word, we can provide this as a Word document. It's actually a Word document in our system, and it becomes a PDF when it's posted online. The other thing you can do is searching. And one of the really nice things about this platform, and one of the really the main reasons that communities like to do this project is you've now got all of the general bylaws and the zoning bylaw in the same platform. So if someone's looking for something, they can do a single search across everything. So if I just moved into the town and I want to say, you know, I really want to put a fence up or a shed in my backyard, is there anything in the code about fences? If I put in fence up here, it's going to jump me to every section in zoning, because remember zoning is going to start with 275, and it's going to be showing right here. Or elsewhere in the general bylaws, if there is one, it doesn't look like it, looks like everything's in zoning. But it's going to show me everywhere that, every section of the bylaw that talks about fences. So you can use the search feature here. If you have a double, more than one word, like I want to say, I, I need to get a dog license, so I wanted to search for dog and license. And that'll take me to the section in the general bylaws that tells me what fee I have to pay for a dog license. And any other information I need as a new resident. Obviously, when the project is done, the questions will no longer be here. They will not be in a public facing document. But that just kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of the functionality of the platform and what will be available to people when the project is done. Everything's in this platform, you can search, you can download. You can't change anything. No one can come in here and start typing and change something. But it provides great access to all of the bylaws. Any questions? So basically, that's it. That's the platform. The general bylaws and the zoning bylaw have been posted here. All we've done at this point is the renumbering to put them in this code format. The next step is for the town to decide what, if any, changes you actually want to make to the text via the questions we wrote or other revisions that you've already started working on or that you submit. And then we have to gather that information as the next step, what changes you want to make. We incorporate them and then work with the town to get everything submitted to town meeting and the attorney general to be approved. And then once all that is done, then this site will come down and your public facing eCode, like I showed you at the beginning for South Hadley, will be posted and available. Okay.
Any other questions, Cindy, Sarah, Richard?
No, I think this is very easy to follow.
Okay, if you have any questions at all as you're going through the questions or using the site, or, you know, some time goes by and you're like, I know Deb talked about something, but I can't remember, you know, how to do it. Please, please reach out to me via email. You can give me a call. I believe Paul has all my contact information, happy to help at any time. If you need me to do another session like this for the, the planning board members who weren't able to make this meeting, I'm happy to do that. Again, you can add as many users to the site as you need right here, or you can just shoot me an email and say, Deb, can you please add? And just give me their email addresses and I can take care of it for you. And hopefully you'll be good to go.
Very good.
I would, I believe, I would just, if you can, keep the town clerk in on the loop of kind of how you're doing. She is the, what we refer to as the moderator, which isn't like town meeting moderator. She's kind of, has control of the site. She's the one, when all the questions that are answered, has to kind of push the final button to submit this to us. So it would be a good idea to just kind of keep her in the loop and kind of let her know where you are in the process. What I'll be doing, Paul, is when I follow up with her or with you, I'll just copy you, I'll copy you both in on any correspondence. So try to keep everybody in the loop of where we are in the review of zoning and review of the general bylaws.
And the town clerk is like, like the gatekeeper.
Yes, exactly.
But I gotta say, the work they did on South Hadley's bylaws is great. And we loved it and it's done. It really worked well.
Okay.
Thank you, Deb. I don't want to keep you any longer.
Okay, I will stop sharing. Thank you all so much for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. I know that was a lot of information. I hope I didn't talk too fast, because I do have a tendency to do that. And I think that's it for me then.
Well, thank you, and we'll be in touch. And I'll probably, next day or two, get you Cindy, Sarah, Dan, and Paul, or other board members' emails, so you can give them the permission to be on the site as well.
Great, great.
All right, have a good night and have a good weekend. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Great. Take care now. So.
Can I, can I make some general comments or questions?
Go ahead.
Just a small thing, I just happen to know in the, in the districts, we have more specific districts. She had R, C, and I, and we, of course, break them down a little bit more. I don't know if that's critical, but I just noticed that. Should think we would have it more specific to, you know, our N, our V, et cetera.
I think she was showing an example of someone else though, wouldn't she? Richard, or is that how they break it down?
I'll have to take a look at it, but I thought she had R, then she, I thought she had the subcategories under there, but I looked closer.
Well, she very may have, and I misunderstood it, so that's one thing. And then I just didn't know what everybody thinks regarding going forward. I mean, we, we have the expertise of Richard. Had you thought about how we would go forward on this? Would Richard look at everything and try to answer the questions? Because maybe they've already been answered, et cetera. I, I just didn't know how, what would be the next steps here?
Yeah, how do you want to, how do you want to tackle this?
I'm going to suggest that at your first meeting in July, that the board collectively go through those questions, I'll look at them beforehand. And then we kind of discuss a response to each of the questions at that meeting.
Yeah, because isn't that got to be, that's got to be done by August?
August 26th, so you could wait till your first meeting in August.
Yeah, but that's a lot of questions.
Yeah. And so that's what I'm thinking, first meeting in July, if everybody gets on, on the system within next week, first meeting in July, everybody's had a chance to go through the draft, they have a chance to go through the questions. And then we can see if we can print out the questions and just go through them systematically at the meeting. And it may be that, no, the, the response may be on most of them is, this may be addressed in our revision, see attached. But I think that's, that's how I'd suggest we approach it, to start at the first meeting in July, and we don't finish at that meeting. Then we either do it at the second meeting in July or the first meeting in August, finish it up.
I'm assuming that I can take our laptop and use the big screen there in the meeting room.
Should be able to.
Yeah, and we go through them on the screen and click right, right then and there, revise, change, leave alone, whatever, whatever the case may be, and make the comments right there.
Or assign, have Richard do a response to this, or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, right. All right. Well, we have another meeting in June, but I mean, I don't know if it's going to be time enough for folks to get on that.
I think you need to wait till the first meeting in July to have, give everybody time enough to get on the system, go through all the, the draft and go through the questions.
Okay. So once the questions are answered then, how is that going to affect the work that we did on the edits?
What I'm going to do is go through and see what portion that has been done in the edits could be submitted as just a replacement of what's there. For instance, where we took all the definitions and put them in there, I think we can attach that and say, replace this section with these.
Yep.
That means I have to go through those definitions where we've changed the definition some, because some definitions need to be changed. And same with like site plan review. We want to incorporate this into it as a new section, add an article for site plan review. And then here it is.
How about your table of use regulation?
Table use regulations is going to be much more challenging. I have to take a look at that, because that is a very substantive change that relates to a lot of different changes in the bylaw. So then I have to take a look at that before, before we meet.
I mean, we, we, we've covered that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So could we submit, we could submit that table of use the way we've already?
I gotta look at the other changes in the bylaw that relate to the, that change in use table. Because you made changes in other portions of bylaw that is reflected in that. And so we need to be sure we have all the pieces together. And it's going to be a repeal and replace article for zoning. There's no way around that.
Right, repeal and replace, that's how it's going to be presented at a public hearing.
That's how we present a public hearing at a town meeting. That's how we present a public hearing at a town meeting.
So, so that means that all we do at that meeting is field questions about the changes? If someone has it, or we're not going through everything chapter by chapter?
I wouldn't recommend it, no. I think you can post the proposed revised zoning bylaw and have people voice in questions they have about changes in it.
And wouldn't that also, um, come into play at town meeting? Say for instance, it comes to town meeting and you've got a whole different, uh, bunch of players there, and that could then, uh, produce discussion.
Absolutely. And that's the reason I would be skeptical about having this at the annual town meeting. I would think they want to have a, at a special town meeting.
Yeah, I get you, yeah, because of, there's more articles on the, uh, annual, right?
Yeah, and there's more articles annual that you have to do.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to adopt your budget.
Yeah.
And there's certain foreign articles you have to do, otherwise, come July 1, you've got a problem. So the adoption of new revised or amended, uh, general or zoning bylaws is not something you have to do at annual town meeting. You could do that at a separate meeting.
So then we're looking, we're looking at the fall probably of 23.
Uh, I don't know, it, uh, when South Hadley did theirs, they ended up doing the, um, codification at a special town meeting in January one year.
Well, I mean, sometimes, sometimes we have them in anywhere from October to January, it depends, but.
It may be that it's ready at annual town meeting, but due to the scope of it, you may want to have a June sp- special town meeting just on the, just on the bylaws, nothing else. That, that's, that's a call that the select board and the town administrator make.
Right.
Okay, that the key for the planning board is you have to follow chapter 40A, uh, regarding the public hearing, notice all the, this type of stuff. So we want to be sure the public hearing held by the planning board is not more than six months ahead of the town meeting consideration of the repeal and replace article.
Yeah. Okay. That's it, Premier Stan, Brian, Richard?
Yeah, so what I'm going to do, I will look at the questions and, uh, see, and before at the first meeting in July, see if we can be ready to try to answer them, answer the questions and, uh, give you an idea of what, what it costs to do all this work in time for the, uh, town meeting next year.
Well, I've already, as I said, I filled out the ARP of funds, but I don't know if I put in enough, I, and that's why I needed you to.
Oh, you put in a hundred thousand, you got enough, don't worry.
Hundred dollars?
Hundred thousand, that's it.
Yeah.
How many dollars did you put in for, Paul?
Well, I put in fifteen thousand.
Yeah. I'm sure that'll be enough, uh, and.
I mean, that, that's for this budget year, we've got, uh, of course, the PVPC grants five thousand, that's going to take care of the section of affordable.
It will and it won't, that's, that's going to be a separate section altogether.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Okay.
I guess I can dismiss you now, Richard, and we'll cover any other business we have.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks, Richard, good night. Sarah, are you still there? Somewhere? I don't have anything else, Cindy, unless you have a committee report or anything. I, I, uh, saw the ribbon cutting of the land on Cold Spring.
Yep, that was, uh, that was an effort of multiple committees, boards, as you probably noted. Friends of South Hampton Open Space actually did a large portion of that, and, um, uh, Open Space Committee, all we did was kind of coordinate invitations and, you know, make sure people got there in time, that sort of thing. Nothing very major, but it, um, it's really kind of cool because it was the 50th anniversary of the donation that Ted and his late wife Maxine gave of the property that's now the Lyman Conservation, Lyman Family Conservation Property down on Route 10. Otherwise, other, um, you know, on town meeting, we've talked about this before, the, um, their Courtney property across from you is, is going to be on the warrant, and we hope to hear before then whether or not the drinking water protection grant has been, um, won by the town, which would make a very big difference on the amount of money that we, we the town are, uh, we have to vote on the entire amount pending the approval of that grant, which would cover 50% of it. So let's hope all that comes through before town meeting, so we can be really clear on what is going to come out of CPC, we just, that's one thing.
And Kestrel's picking up that other 50%, is that it?
No.
No.
CPC would pay 50%, and state drinking water protection grant, the other 50%. No, Kestrel's not covering anything, it's, in fact, there's fees involved that has to be paid to Kestrel by the town. I think somewhat modest, but they've done all the work, you know, they've, as far as grant writing, et cetera. Other than that, um.
By the way, that land on Cold Spring, is that on the left-hand side going up or the right-hand side?
It's, it's on the left, if you go by my house and Sarah's house, and you go straight up the road to the corner of where it bridges off, Rattle Hill is on the, would turn left.
Yeah.
Right there at that corner. However, the little parking pull-off area, you'll keep going up on Cold Spring another couple hundred feet, and you'll see right now there's little orange flags that are designating. It's really more of a pull-out area versus a, a parking lot, all on the left. And, um, the Hendricks refer to that as the Upper Meadow, and you can, you can walk in there. The, um, butters, um, are, are really clear that their land is private, and it's all posted. You know, it's for, you know, they don't want anybody walking on their property, the people that live next to that, which is, of course, they're right. So you'll not be in jeopardy of walking on their property unless you cross over the do not trespass signs, which you would not. But it's kind of nice, it's a nice little lot, and it does have an old cellar hole on it that goes back to the 18th century, which Mr. Hendrick was very excited to tell us about. So that's, that's all I have to say specific to what's going on.
Anything from your end, Sarah, from, uh, any of the committees here on?
No, I, I don't have anything right now, sorry for the lapse, I was doing bedtime quickly, getting changed.
Very, very understandable, no, no apology necessary. Then with that then, um, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, there's no other business. And if you didn't catch us, Richard suggested for the first meeting in July, which.
Let me get my calendar here.
Typically, we only meet once in July and August, but if we can, we may have to meet twice at some point, but.
That's right.
I don't know what people's, uh, vacation schedules are, but the first meeting in July is the 6th, and that's, sometimes that's a vacation week around the 4th, so I can change it, but we'll probably discuss that at our, uh, meeting on the 15th of June. Get a better handle on Paul and Dan where they're at, but, uh, he recommended we, uh, start the answering of questions that Deb told us about. Uh, I'll sign you guys, I'll send the emails, um, to Deb for you guys, so, uh, you can get on there. I'm going to print out the questions so we can go through them.
Okay, so we intend that we'll wait and do that all as a group in the meeting?
Yes. I think what I, uh, remember saying is that I bring the laptop and we'll bring up those questions on the screen. And then we'll go through them, and then we can click them off right there as we go through them or edit them, however we need to.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, so Paul, I'm, I'm not able to make the next meeting, uh, unless, I really hope I don't have to attend. I, I do have a conflict that night, so I hope the other two people are able to attend. But the, um, in July, I certainly can make the first meeting. My, my, my family, my daughter from France is coming in, and, and for three weeks after that in July. So not impossible, but hopefully I don't have to attend a meeting at that, you know, at the second, uh, sorry, the third, the third, uh, week of July, if possible.
Um, all right, well, we'll work something out.
Okay, great.
So motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn, second.
Long favor, aye?
Aye, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.
Have a good week, weekend, take care, everybody.
Thanks, Paul, thank you.
Night, good night.
Bye.